Okay. The meeting is ordered. Please go ahead. Michael. Redmond Childs.
Here.
Ms. Collins.
Here.
Mervyn Costin.
Here.
Ms. Guido.
Here.
Dr. Jacobo.
Here.
Ms. Lau.
Here.
Mr. Michael.
Here.
Ms. Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Shear.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of the oath of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, this is a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining matters leading to employment of particular individuals, employment history of particular individuals to report forward to placement of students with disability and proposed acquisitions or sale of lease or real property as a publicity was substantially affected by the year up.
Ooh.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, we'll be adjourning until seven o'clock roughly, and we'll return to public session as close to seven o'clock as we possibly can. And I'm going to ask your, I guess your patience will be permanent, I, um, huh? Go red. Yeah, go red, everybody.
Are we on?
Okay. Um, no. We're good? I'd like to call the meeting to order. Uh, the session's ordered. So we have one resolution coming out of executive session. DOE forty-three, be resolved that employee number twenty-four fifty-four shall be suspended without pay during the pendency of section thirty-twenty-eight education law proceedings against said employee, I'm sorry, be suspended with pay, correction. Suspended with pay during pendency of section thirty-twenty-eight education law proceedings against said employee. Okay, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we now reach the portion of our meeting where we welcome the board to address the board, and if you've signed up, taking the order of which you've signed up, I want to remind you you're limited to two minutes. It's not a conversation, and the board clerk will let you know, notify you when you're approaching your two minutes. And there are a lot of people here tonight, so if we get to thirty minutes of public comment, we're going to call it at thirty minutes, and you may stay, and we'll have a second public comment at the end of the meeting after the conference is done. So first on the list for public participation, has anybody signed up? Please identify yourself and speak into the microphone because we can hear you in here, but we can't always hear on live streaming.
Okay. You tell me if you can. My name's Dean Tambori. I'm with Labor's Local Seventeen, we're at U-burg, New York. We've had several meetings regarding the project labor agreement for your upcoming and currently bidding school project. I think maybe the board would like you to reconsider your vote of no for the project labor agreement. I think there's a lot more information, I think maybe you don't have all the information. I think it's that important, that's why I'm here tonight. If anybody else has any other questions, Dr. Powell, you still have my contact information? Can you please give it to the board if anybody else has any other questions? Because I read a few of the comments in the paper, and I don't think it's the correct information. So somewhere along the line, I think we miscommunicated somewhere. I'd like to straighten that out, and I think it's that important, and please reconsider the vote for the project labor agreement for the school project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else who wishes to address the board?
I'm next, thanks. Hi, my name is Mike Ham. I live here in Kingston, New York. I'm also a representative for locally twenty-five, the operating engineers. I too am here to ask you to reconsider your vote of no against the project labor agreement for the Kingston High School project. Dean has already spoke about it. It feels though there's been a lot of miscommunication on it, and some maybe misconceptions on it, okay? I read too in the paper, and I talked to a lot of people in the community, and I get hit with the fact that union prices would drive up the cost of the project, which is unfounded, okay? Prevailing wage is New York's standard for this project, for this municipality project. The other thing I was just a little taken back about was that, you know, some of the people said that we were very intimidating, and that threats were made. And I was at all those meetings. We didn't threaten anybody, you know? We came here as, you know, I live in this community, and I had to pay taxes in this community. I came here with the idea that if we could save you five to eleven million dollars in taxpayer money, I thought that was a great idea. I didn't see anybody else walk into the room to present this, okay? And, you know, with the added savings on top, if the due diligence was done, I'm sure there is even added savings, okay? And once again, I'm asking you to reconsider, you know, using the PLA for this project. And Dr. Catalino, I know you have my information too. I am local, I live right on East Chester Street, I've lived here for thirty years, okay? Well, fifty years, I live across the river in Port Moon, twenty of them, okay? And, you know, you can feel free to call me at any time, I have information available at all times, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Catalino, we have some special guests this evening.
We do have some special guests, as some of you know, not everyone in the room knows or everyone watching at home knows, a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, we had a very serious event happen in one of our basketball games. In the heat of the basketball game, a close game coming down into the fourth quarter, there was an emergency in the stands, a young man, he's a high school graduate, in the stands had collapsed, and was desperately in need of attention. Three members of our staff rushed to his attention, and without going on, I know at least Harry and Glenn, I know very well, and they don't want me to go on and on about them, they saved this young man's life. And we wanted to take this opportunity, and I'm happy to say that the young man is now doing well. He's back attending, he's a regular attendee at our basketball games and our sporting events, and he's back attending. And so again, it was a story that ended well, but it ended well because of the fast thinking and the bravery and the huge hearts of the people who are here at the Kingston School District. So I would like to call them up and give them this appreciation in the on behalf of the Board of Education, and I think really of the whole community for what they do for our kids every day, so I will do that. Our athletic director, Coach Glenn Maysh. And our athletic trainer, who's new to us this year, obviously she's already earned As we move forward through the superintendent's report, next we have a brief presentation from our district superintendent, Dr. Charles Corey, who is here to talk us about proposals for our.
Thank you, Paul, and happy new year, everybody. One district I follow, a group of kindergarten students who did a presentation, you know, I never can follow anything that's easy to follow. Congratulations to those three individuals, it's a great, great work with the kids. Basically, every year I come out and do an area of focus, where we are, Ulster BOSI's where we're headed. And I have a PowerPoint in front of you, I'm not going to show it, basically to highlight some of the things that have taken place. The first one is the fact that we opened up our Hudson Valley Pathways PTEC program here at the Kingston High School site in the Carnegie Center. As most of the board knows, the tuition for that program is about seventeen thousand dollars per student, all of it is BOSI's aidable, so that essentially most districts in the county get about fifty cents back on the dollar for payment of those tuition fees. For those of you who don't know, it's a six-year program. Students enter in ninth grade, they stay in the program for six years, they exit with a high school diploma from their local high school, it isn't an Ulster BOSI's diploma, we don't give out diplomas, it's from their local high school. But at the end of the six years, they receive their high school diploma, as well as an associate's degree or an associate's science degree from one of the local community colleges. Most of the kids in the program right now would get it from Ulster Community College in either the area of advanced manufacturing or computer science. We've also been in discussions with the folks at SUNY New Falls, and, you know, have had many discussions about eligible students being able to continue their program at SUNY New Falls in the College of Engineering if that was what they chose to do. And certainly they've helped us in the design of the program, so the backwards design of the program, from what they need to see in their students. I should emphasize that six-year program, high school diploma and associate's degrees at no cost to the parents, okay? So that is a, we won a grant that the governor put in his budget, and we were one of the first sixteen awardees of that grant since the last budget, they awarded, I believe, ten more, and I suspect the governor will continue to fund this program moving forward. Kingston has enrolled twelve of our sixteen students in that program, and I put on the PowerPoint a big thank you. We really appreciate your commitment to the program, and mostly your commitment to the students in Kingston High School. This is not a program for everybody, it's a program for kids who are not traditionally college-bound, and these students are thriving. I know Dr. Catalino is a frequent visitor to the program, and sees the kind of work that we're doing there. We, it's a project-based program, we work with our industry partners in the Council of Industry, and we are just now beginning the recruitment of our second class. On the second slide, I excerpted an article that just was appeared in the SARMES post-star highlighting the program, to give you an example of the kind of work that they do. Every month they go out to one of our industry partners, where the executives of those industries present a problem of practice that they're facing. They then take that problem of practice back to school, and using the core curriculum content, using the core subjects, they study and work on solutions to that problem, and then a month later they travel back to the industry and present their findings and recommendations to the executive board of those, of that industry. This past month they went to MediaCom, which is, I think, the fourth or fifth largest telecommunications company in the United States. They are based in Orange County, but they serve mostly the southwestern part of the United States, with cable TV, wireless, internet, and so on. They were given the problem by the executives of maximizing the last fifty feet of wireless connectivity, okay? Because that's the area, if you have wireless in your home, you know that there are places that are stronger than other places, or even in a school building. So how do you maximize the last fifty feet in terms of usage? They have come back now to school, they're learning all about wireless communication, they've actually mapped the Carnegie site with signal strength, and within a couple of weeks they'll be traveling back down and presenting their solutions to the industry partners. These are kids, again, who, out of exiting eighth grade, were not traditionally college-bound, and they're standing in front of executives of major corporations presenting ideas and solutions. This is, I think, the fourth industry that they're visited since the beginning of the school year. So we're thrilled with the kind of work that they're doing, and certainly would invite you to stop in at the Carnegie Center at any time to see twelve of your kids and sixteen of the kids from the entire county. The second goal is, is a budget goal for us in this area for the fifteen, sixteen school year, as the business official here, Alan and Paul, know, that we have to shift our retirement, payment of our retirement costs from where they are presently charged, which is in the cosers that you have when you do business with us, to the administrative budget. We are doing that in the fifteen, sixteen school year. In the two thousand eight, nine school year, the controller came out, identified the fact that we were charging in the wrong place according to the commissioner's regulations for BOSI's, and we had also accumulated a fund over, since I think the early nineties, to essentially soften the blow of retirement costs. BOSI's is not allowed by statute to collect a reserve fund for that purpose. Local school districts are, but BOSI's are not specifically allowed to do that. So the controller directed us to return the fund and accepted our recommendation that we would follow the lead of our local districts. And over the past several years, we've been drawing down that fund. We have been charging the fees for post-retirement benefits in our cosers, we collect them, but we don't expense them there, okay? We expense them against the fund. So the fund, which used to be about twelve point four million dollars, is now down about eight point two million dollars, and because of the accelerating cost of healthcare and so on, we estimate that in four or five years that fund will be totally expended. So presently, we charge it in the cosers, but we don't expense it there, which means that, as you all know, any money not spent in a BOSI's budget must be returned to the component district. So you get that money refunded to you. The idea being that when that fund is drawn down, it won't be a new expense for you. So right now you get, it's an in and out in terms of our budgeting. The problem is it's expensed in the, it's charged in the cosers, and it needs to be charged in our administrative budget. That was one of the directives of the controller several years ago. We're making that move this year. You will see a seventy, about a seventy-five percent increase in our administrative budget because we're moving all of those expenses into the administrative budget. What you will also see is a reduction in all of our unit prices in the cosers because we are drawing, we are removing those charges from the cosers, so all of our coser prices will go down. All of the money will be surplus, and so you'll get the refund. The only difference will be, you will get the refund based, and administration is based on student enrollment, whereas in the cosers it was based on level of participation. Kingston City School District has about thirty percent of the total enrollment in Ulster County, so you will get about a thirty percent return of the total cost of the healthcare cost for Ulster BOSI's, the retired healthcare cost for Ulster BOSI's. This would all be easy if we could, if BOSI's were allowed to keep a reserve account, we're not. And I don't suspect in this economic climate, even though they've been talking all day about allowing us to do that, I don't suspect that they're of the belief to allow us to set up reserves. The second slide just kind of shows you is a summary, fourteen, fifteen, where, or the third slide, where the, where we are today, which is a summary of what I just said, and where from about two thousand fifteen to the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year it will go. I just want to make you aware that when we do our budget presentation in March or April, you will see that seventy-five percent increase in the administrative budget. I know how boards, they will look at that right-hand column, business administrators will circle it, and you'll say, what's going on? I want you to remember this conversation, okay? This is what's going on, because you will also see unit prices down significantly. And that's the second area. We had made a commitment to hold our unit prices down to under, to one percent or less. I gave you a brief summary, we've finished our unit prices, I think they've been delivered or will be delivered to business officials very shortly. Twenty-two of our unit prices will be reduced, fifty-six of them will have no increase, a hundred and sixty-eight will have increases of less than one percent, ten unit prices will increase one percent, and only two unit prices will increase more than one percent. And those two unit prices that are increasing more than one percent are cosers that have people involved, and that's a salary issue. I mean, their salaries went up by more than one percent, so that's the only thing in that particular coser. I did want to point out one other thing, that our administrative budget, if I took out the increase, the seventy-five percent increase, it's actually about an eighty-two percent increase, that's caused by the healthcare being transferred in, the rest of the cost of our administrative budget, the non-insurance cost, has actually been reduced from last year to this year by eight percent. So we've taken our non-healthcare administrative budget down by about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's about an eight percent reduction, and you'll see that reported that way. Then I wanted to just briefly talk about the, some of the curricular changes that we're making up at CTE. As many of you who may be aware, there's a tremendous shortage of programmers in the United States, and many of our programs are technical in nature, and they, they kind of surface cover programming, but we're going to make a more concerted effort to emphasize coding or programming, computer programming, and all of the technical subjects that we teach up at CTE. There are particular areas of need across the country, there are many, many fine programs that, kind of in a fun, project-based way, introduce computer programming to students, and we believe we have the students who are already there for a technical education who could benefit by a greater exposure. So that you'll see across the board in all of our subjects up at CTE, many of our subjects, some of the non-technical ones you won't see it. And we're also shifting more to a more concentrated, multidisciplinary, project-based approach. You know, the problems of practice in the real world don't exist in a single discipline, they always involve multiple disciplines. And so we're emphasizing, use an example, our robotics teacher is working with our welding teacher, because in the world today, much of the welding that is done in the world is done using robots. And so the kids traditionally will learn, you know, hands-on welding, and they will still learn that, but they're also going to be learning how to use robots to do robotic welding, to make them better prepared for the world that they're, they're moving into. We're also introducing, and we're in discussions, I know, with Kingston amongst other districts, new special education programs designed to reduce the number of out-of-county placements. Paul has been, you know, vocal, as all of the superintendents have, about the number of students, special education students who are being placed out of the county. We've kind of done a needs analysis, we're working with special ed directors and others to look at programs that we can build inside of Ulster County that will allow school districts in Ulster County to keep their kids inside the county. The last two slides really are, and I've given you a bigger, don't look at the slides, look at the other piece because it's a little bit easier to read. What I wanted to show you is the last five years of participation with BOSI's programs, to give you a little bit of a sense in a straight-line manner of how, how the coser world works, and, you know, how much business you have done with Ulster BOSI's. You can see ten, eleven, your total contracted BOSI's or coser participation was a little over nine million dollars. About two million dollars of that was not eligible for BOSI's aid because it was aided in other areas, that would be special ed, transportation, and ELA. So the eligible part of that nine million, and by the way, those three areas receive aid from other areas, special ed aid, transportation aid, ELLA. And so the state never replicates aid programs. If you get aid in special education, you don't get BOSI's aid. So of the nine million total business you did with us, seven million was eligible for BOSI's aid. Your aid ratio back in two thousand ten, eleven was fifty-two point seven percent. BOSI's aid that was based on eligible coser participation that you received was two point seven million dollars. You then also received a refund of surplus in the cosers you participated in of about nine hundred thousand dollars. So the net cost of your participation in our BOSI's programs was about three point three million dollars. Said very simply, you got about seven point, about a seven million dollars worth of services that cost you, at the end of the day, when you deduct all of the aid you received, about three point three million dollars. And as you can follow that track, you've been fairly good, great customers for us, and hopefully you're satisfied with our services, because you can see, there's been a little bit of up and down in your service requests, but certainly thirteen, fourteen, you did nine point four million dollars worth of business, you will be receiving, it's an unaudited number, this is what's been submitted for you up to state ed, three point one million dollars in BOSI's aid. Of that nine point four million, seven six was available, was eligible for BOSI's aid, you'll receive, your aid ratio went up to about fifty, fifty-eight point eight, next year it'll, or this current year it'll be about sixty-three point two percent, so sixty-three cents on every eligible dollar will come back to you in the form of aid. So you'll get about three point one million in aid next year, and then the refund that, if we don't delay open tomorrow because of cold, around nine o'clock tomorrow morning, I'll be handing Alan and Paul a check for about one point one million dollars as a refund of surplus from the previous year. So your seven point six million dollars of eligible aid cost you about three point three million dollars net. So I just wanted you, as a board, to be aware that, and I think doing business with BOSI's is, you know, a cost-effective way of doing business, I know Paul and Alan agree with that. The next thing I wanted to show you is where are your kids? I know many of you come up to our annual meeting where you, you know, have dinner with us, we present the budget, and usually at the end, the dinner is prepared by our culinary students, many of whom come from Kingston. I just basically gave you a list of where, where your kids are enrolled in our programs. CTE, right now you have two hundred and thirty-eight students in our CTE programs, you can see, you know, cosmetology, criminal justice, health occupations, look like they're the top three, but you have a large number of students in all of our programs. In our New Visions programs, you have eleven students, New Visions Health, seven, and four in the Advanced Robotics and Engineering Program. In our Alternative Education Program, of the forty-one kids in that program, you have eleven. Our special ed programs, you have thirty-two out of the seventy-nine kids in that program. And overall, you have three hundred and, well, the Pathways Academy I already mentioned, you have twelve, and overall you have three hundred and four of your high school, well, it's high school, and, except for the special ed students, high school age students out of our total enrollment of a thousand fifty-three. So about thirty percent of the enrollment in BOSI's programs comes from Kingston, and to that we thank you. As always, I'm available to come up here anytime you need me to answer questions. I would love to give you a snapshot of what's happening in Albany and state ed, but I really have no idea what's happening in Albany and state ed. The commissioner, Mike Woss, has left to go down to Washington, as you all know, there's an interim commissioner, they're doing a search, and you read the letters that have gone back and forth between the governor and the Board of Agents, and so we might as well just sit in the bleachers and watch the drama unfold. So with that, any questions, I would be happy to answer. I do want to introduce Pat Rouch, Chris Farrell from the BOSI Board, Chris is the Kingston rep, Pat is the vice president of the board from New Falls, Juan Doni, my assistant superintendent for business, and Lori Cassell, my deputy superintendent. So, yes, Rob.
You, you mentioned, so are the sharements possible to increase about seventy-five percent or eighty-two percent?
When you net out, the decline roughly is about seventy-five percent.
Is that the same for all the county districts?
Yeah. Yeah.
Dr. Corey, I was very excited about the PTEC program, you know, when you started out, and we started, last year we had sixteen students. Are they all returning following the program? All sixteen?
I think we had one in and out, I think one student left the program, and one, we had kids who wanted to come in, and I believe there was an in and out, and then, I think we started with fifteen, and we've added another student, yeah, so we've gone up. You know, we've gotten a tremendous amount of interest from parents, parents read the articles, they go to their school districts. The interesting thing is, and I applaud you because you, and Paul, because he's championing this, and for Kingston students, that's not the same throughout the county. Sometimes superintendents say, we're not going to participate, sometimes superintendents say, we'll give you one seat, that kind of thing. And so that's between a parent and their local Board of Education. We can only provide the program, and then hopefully people will see the advantage of it. That tuition, you know, seventeen thousand dollars sounds like a lot, if I was to, our CTE programs, for instance, are half-day programs, the tuition for the CTE programs are right around ten thousand dollars for half a day. So that CTE program costs about twenty thousand dollars, you know, for a full-day program. Our Alternative Education Program costs about twenty-two thousand dollars a program, so seventeen thousand dollars, which, if it's, if it's two, if we have money left over, that will be refunded as surplus, you know, so we, we are, and I believe there will be a small refund from that seventeen thousand dollars, and, you know, whatever that dollar amount is per student will be multiplied by twelve, and then there's eight on top of that. So we think it's a great, it's a great program, and if you have an opportunity to stop by, just let Paul know or myself know, and we'll make arrangements for you to see the kids in action.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes.
I had a question about the chart of student participation in Ulster BOSI's programs. I had a question about the chart of student participation in Ulster BOSI's program. Under special education, are, the way it appears, that Kingston is filling both the Alpha and A-AP program? Is that Alpha slash A, is that made out of eight seats?
No, no, there's multiple sections.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify for that. And also, you said that you were making commitment to prevent out-of-district placements. Just out of curiosity, or in Ulster placements in, like, the Ocean schools, is that still considered in district?
No, no.
Or in county?
That's not, that would be out of, any of you, our Ulster BOSI's programs would be out of county. And that has a double whammy for Ulster districts. Alan would tell you that they, you incur a transportation charge, obviously, because you're transporting the kids to those programs. But in addition, many times, and I'm not sure the policy of our Ulster BOSI, there's an administrative charge because you're participating as a non-component district. So there's like a double whammy for going out of county, you know. And that's why we're looking at, who are the kids who are leaving the county? What are the things that we can do? It's hard to change a parent's mind because there's a whole process in terms of those placements. So some parents, you know, even if we had a program, it may, it would be up to the local child study team to make the recommendation to bring a student back, and particularly, that could be a challenging conversation to have with the parent. So we're looking, you know, kind of with a forward view, who are the kids that we could bring back, and let's build those programs here in the county.
In my preseason CSC meetings, I have noticed a sharp decrease in the amount of recommendations the CSC is making to some of these schools, so I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Bob?
Also on this list, I see that there are virtual AP programs that are offered, but I don't see...
Yeah, I'll get that number for you. I didn't get the number before I left the office today, but I'm not sure how many.
Do you participate in some?
Paul, do you know?
We did not last year. We emphasized it this year, so I don't know if we have any, if so, how many go by.
One of the things that, you know, Paul and I, and Alan and others get hundreds of emails a day, and one of the emails that came out over a vacation, so it might have gotten lost in the shuffle, was the, there's money left in that virtual AP grant, that money, and the state is allowing us to use that money to provide SAT preparation courses for eligible juniors. Even if you had never participated in the virtual AP grant, you can essentially get money to hire teachers to teach an SAT preparation course for juniors. So I'd encourage, and I know Paul will follow up on it, encourage you to do that. You know, and it's based on school size, and the initial allocations are based on numbers of students in a particular school, so you're one of the largest schools in the region because it's a regional grant, so you would get a large share of the available funds to you next if you're interested. Yes, sir.
Just a comment there. I wanted to say thank you because it's so important. Thanks to you and your board and your associates to come here and keep us updated, not only us as a school board, but parents and public, members of public as well, because I still think there's that old misconception out there, you know, I'm sure it's air-aware as well, that BOSI's, and yet look at all the newly exciting programs that you're enabling our students to participate.
Yeah, it's not the old CTE, you know, it's very, very different. And we applaud the regions for all putting up the multiple pathways to graduation where CTE will kind of have an equal footing as we move forward. So, you know, again, I thank you for your support because, again, 30% of our students come from Kingston. And, you know, it doesn't happen unless the Kingston Ward and the administration support our program, so appreciate that. Yeah.
I want to congratulate you on your emphasis on the computer programming and coding. I think that's really important. I listened to a program of the Commonwealth Club in December. Marissa Meyer, who is the number 20 employee at Google and now CEO of Yahoo, mentioned that nationwide, 200,000 students take the AP Calculus exam, and only 30,000, or less than 30,000, take the AP Computer Science exam, and the job opportunities are probably reversed.
Right. Application programming, you know, the programming for our smartphones and smart devices is exploding, and there just aren't programmers. So it's, and it's an area that our kids, if they dabbled in it, would, you know, flourish.
As opposed to most people's use of Calculus after they...
Yeah, absolutely.
...finish the course. That's further than...
Any other questions, Detective Corey? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And, you know, thank Laurie for that. Thanks.
Last thing, the last thing I have on the superintendent's report is our five-weekly JFK playground update. As we know, the last time we had some disappointing news, but we have some good news, I guess, at this point. We know the equipment is being shipped from the manufacturer on January 22nd. Will arrive, will arrive to the distributor, and they'll make, they'll make, they'll make arrangements with the city to deliver the playground to the site when the weather gets a little better. But we do have a date for installation. We will be installing the week of March 30th, which is kind of two good things. That's also the week of our break. So if we do, we have a community, we have a community built, people will be able to participate in that, maybe being asked that we have a long week, you know, a break that week. So we have an installation date, we pushed them forward, Mr. Olson, I pushed him, he pushed them, so we got an installation date, and that will be ready for the spring, so we get in, first weekend in, we'll, you know, on March 30th. We have April, May, and June for the students to use the playground.
Is it snowing?
It's not going to snow this year.
I hope not, but...
Questions for the rest of the family, that's your part.
So move along to, if you have a question?
The Mahar RFP is on the...
Oh, it's on the consent agenda.
I'm super good, I'm sorry. The Mahar RFP is on my superintendent's report from your, on the agenda. It's a resolution on the consent agenda, and just to give you a brief, and you can discuss that, that is the RFP that we put out to have Architectural Services look at Mahar and consider the idea of creating a central office at Mahar and/or central office and a warehouse, and/or central office and a UPK center, and/or all three. So we put an RFP out for that. We had about eight people respond to that RFP. We did an analysis, we booked a cost analysis and an analysis of the, of the experience and presentation of the individuals, and we interviewed two firms, and as you can see, when you look at your resolution, Alan and I are recommending that CS Arch out of the Capital Area do this study for us, and that's where we're at.
Any other further discussion? If the board still chooses to pull it. All right, now, moving on to approval in minutes of December 10th, 2014. I have a motion to accept the minutes I asked for written. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Are you all those in favor of accepting the minutes of December 10th? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And now we're on to the consent agenda. I would like, any items or resolutions that board members would like pulled?
P105.
P105. Okay. Any others?
B57.
B, please say?
B, B as in boy.
57. Thank you very much.
And B as in boy, 62.
62. Thank you very much. Mrs. Lam?
CUR07. Any others? I'd like, so B60. And B69. And, any others?
B58 is also a donation.
Okay, and B58.
And B63 is a donation.
Um, B63? B63, okay. We have full P105, B as in boy, 57, 58, 59, 60, 62, and 63. And CUR07. It does. Okay. So, do you want to just... Did I have the donation? Okay, Mrs. Collins, would you like to read the donation?
Fine.
Will we get that?
Sure.
Okay. Actually, if you wouldn't mind, can we read the donations, and then we don't have to pull those resolutions, we can go ahead. Consent agenda. Many of these that are pulled are donations that we want to recognize.
And they do appear on the agenda, so just to, once again, publicly acknowledge them. B58 is a donation from the PTA of Ernestine Meyer School in the amount of $1,500, which is a nice gift. B59 is for Kingston High School, was a recipient of a generous grant from the Community Foundation of the Hudson Valley, $2,500, and is going to be used to fund the field trip, the Cape Anne whale watch, which is always a great trip. B60 is a donation from Target, excuse me, John and Kennedy Elementary School, $207.88. And B63 is the donation, we've read about it recently, from Publicized, from the Hudson Valley Economic Development Corporation, that donated that Meekerbot replicator 3D printer and accessories to Kingston High School. Very fortunate to have that. So, just wanted to recognize those donations.
Thank you very much for reading the donation. That leaves us with resolutions P105, B57, B62, and CUR07 still pulled. I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda minus P105, B57, and 62, and CUR07.
I'll vote second.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda minus those resolutions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries. All right, P105.
I'll vote.
Mr., okay. So the child is moving yet, you second? Any discussion?
I ask this to be pulled because I think it's a very significant thing with one of our teachers received their tenure. I think it should be congratulated, and they should be congratulated, so I pulled it for that purpose.
Yes. Yes, she is. Yes.
And perhaps a comment that Ms. Williams is here, and we would like to congratulate you on receiving tenure. If you have, you're in a weird time of year to get tenure because, but you will be invited at the end of the year to the, to our tenure ceremony also, and recognized there as well. But like I said, congratulations. As I say every time, we award tenders, someone's tenure isn't given, it's earned. I know you work with Dr. Perez, and she speaks very highly of you, and you have great evaluations from her, and she wrote a letter of recommendation for you, made it clear that you deserve this honor, and we look forward to you continuing your career and finishing your career in Kingston City School District.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, all those in favor of P105, that is the complaint, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? All right, and on to B57. Mr. Shonk, please.
B57 is the, well, I'll move to B57, the non-resident tuition rate.
Okay, second. And discussion.
I ask this to be pulled. I do it every year when this resolution comes up because it establishes tuition rates for non-resident students, and I'd like to point it out to the public that the difference between our cost for our regular education, which is about $9900 per student, and the cost for special ed education, which is about $35,000 a student. So when we have a 23% classification rate in the Kingston City School District, you know, that's 23% of our students who we're spending $25,000 per student, more than with our special ed students, with our regular ed students, and it's one of the reasons that education is so expensive.
Okay, all those in favor of B57, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And B62? I entertain a motion, B62, which is the disposable, external audit, sorry.
Well, I'll move that first.
And I'll second that. And discussion.
This is the authorizing the contract for external audits for three years with Rangin G. Prusor CPA, who has provided external auditing services for many years in the district. We have three responses to our request for proposal, and the audit finance committee is recommending that the award be made to Rangin G. Prusor for another three years.
Mr. Shonk, please. All those in favor of B62, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, who carries? And, PERC07, CUR07. I just have a question about this because in August, on August 6th, there was textbooks that we had ordered, I thought, for 60 textbooks for the same project.
We did, very good. Very observant. We did, and when we ordered them, we were informed from the, from the publishing company that they were no longer in print.
Okay.
So we had to go back through the process of finding new books for this same course.
But now we're only ordering 30?
Now we're only ordering 30.
At double price, though.
Yes.
Okay, and it's present here at the line.
So we do have the book.
But it's the same, okay. So that, that has not started yet, but...
No, the course has started. They've been working with their old textbook for this course.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of CUR07? Okay, I entertain a motion to vote CUR07.
Some will.
Second. I'm sorry, I have the discussion. All those in favor, I'm going to pause. All those in favor of CUR07, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And that marks the end of the consent agenda. Thank you very much. And now we are on to Board of Education, and I'm returning it over to Dr. Chapo, who is going to give the Richter Restriction Committee, no order, as we call it now, the Teaching and Learning Committee. Teaching and Learning Committee, correct.
It's a dynamic path as always. We began by talking about what the transition is to the part that we put in place, and we transitioned, and just were new configuring. We talked about PDL, and there had just been a professional development session about participative learning and integrating it into a way that we teach here, so that it becomes more than just one class that kids get to take every now and then, it becomes a way of teaching in this district. So hopefully that kind of professional development will continue, and we'll move more fully in that direction. Flex this year, this fifth grade has made the same, the grade course remains similar to what was last year, the sixth grade course now incorporate more language. ENR has been incorporated, kind of folded back into the regular classroom. There's some, there's some differences between elementary and middle schools, and we're waiting to get more information back about how that actually comes into the business. Peaceful school bus is proceeding, it's being integrated in school communities, bus drivers are coming into schools and meeting with kids and principals, and it's moving along. We talked about ELA. ELA, or... DLA, or still we're talking about the process of adapting our DLA curriculum. We're adapting Common Core. We're adapting expeditionary learning. Teacher feedback from la- last year really indicated that between expeditionary learning and Common Core, there wasn't enough writing. Teachers felt there wasn't enough writing. Teachers felt there wasn't enough science, and we need to solve those studies. So, there's really been an effort to, um, include those things back into the curriculum and to really teach DLA in some, in some science and research studies. And also to maybe in the spirit of the expeditionary learning, particularly also practice-based, but adjusting the content and then integrating more science, social studies, and also more, um, about writing. Um, we're still working on adapting the math modules. Um, and that's an ongoing process. And we really provide frameworks for the teachers to teach in, as we look forward. Um, we talked about the extended day pilot, which is still a, something that's on our board goals, but we adopted in the spring. We are working, the organization is working in some instances with the community-based organizations that it had worked with in the proposal that had been submitted last year, with the extended day programs that are currently placed in Tops. So, um, a great example that we talk a lot about, actually, is Wild Earth. It's one community-based organization that we're working with. Hopefully, they'll do the math for school programs, um, through the Tops program, maybe even also at Miller. Um, and that's one relationship that we're hoping to continue to expand. Okay. I think that's all. Is there anything else that you know is bad? Is there? Really bad? Our next meeting is February twenty-sixth.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Dr. Chapo? Okay. And we'll move on to policies, Katie. Uh, we're having the first reading of three policies. We're pulling, uh, policy number fifty-five hundred. Student records will be reconsidered in January. So, we have before us three policies this evening. The first reading.
Correct. And they are attached to the agenda, to tonight's agenda. The first one is policy nineteen hundred, school, family, community partnership. The second one is policy five thousand one hundred and ten, school attendance boundaries. Uh, and the last would be eighty-six thirty-five, information security breach and notification. Our next meeting is this Friday, the night, let's see, and actually, we're going to be discussing, Dr. Padalea sent us some, uh, documents, some input on school attendance boundaries. We're going to be discussing that one on Friday. I was concerned at the beginning of the school year with reshuffling some of the more crowded schools. And in addition to reviewing our usual policies that we have to do moving forward, just looking at some philosophical discussions, we're going to be having, one is about fundraising, and another is going to be revisiting the homework policy. We keep hearing some concerns about that. So, once again, we're meeting Friday the ninth at nine AM.
Thank you. Right here. Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Shonky, the claim auditor, what did you hear?
The Audit and Finance Committee met on, uh, December twenty-third. Who will do the Treasurers' Report. And the Claims Auditor Report for November. I see that we don't have, uh, numbers assigned. So, I'll just combine these and, and, uh, and, uh, move that the board accept the Claims Auditor Report and the Treasurers' Report for, uh, November as recommended by the Audit and Finance Committee.
Excellent. Okay. All those in favor of accepting the Claims Auditor Report and Treasurers' Report, um, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Motion's carrying.
People also discussed, I don't remember pre-discussion, but this may be a previous one, the, um, external auditor, which we had to run, um, moments ago. And also, there's going to be a, um, a second, uh, budget development forum. Uh, is that January twenty to twenty-second?
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
Oh, January twenty-third.
Six PM.
So, it's a Thursday. It'll be here at six PM on January twenty-ninth. But the next meeting of the Audit and Finance Committee, the committee will be on, on Tuesday, uh, January twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. Shonky. And I'm streaming old business. I'm going to board this round, saying old business.
Well, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to give the old business or not, but I'd like to hear, um, I'll talk to the diversity project. I know I'm that one. And it's meeting against, and I can't, I need to prove that. I mean, I should have the next one. So, that would be. Or, are you prepared to report?
Well, yeah. We, uh, we had a pretty good representation from, from all the schools. I think that each school has dedicated, designated someone to be able to come to the school to represent it. It was a good discussion, uh, relative to directions that we were going. Dr. Padalea had, uh, sort of an agenda, which he may be appreciating with us, of, uh, the guidance that we were looking at and the direction that we were going. So, I will move to it.
Yeah, I, we, we did have, as, 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 we had representation from every building, which was great. Um, and, and we had representation from, you know, our teachers, our administrators, and Board of Education as well. So, that was, it was nice to have a, a larger group. And what we were looking to do is, is use our district leadership team and our district goals as a framework of where we're moving, and make sure that what we're doing with the Diversity Cadre is adding to those goals, is part of, those are integrated in how we are, we're doing this. Um, we decided we would have, we would make sure that we, one of us would serve as a liaison between the district leadership team and the Diversity Cadre. And we also wanted to build on what we've already accomplished. And one of the things, when the Diversity Cadre started up, when I came three years ago, when I became the, um, kind of the administrative member, we wanted to get some training. That was going to be, you know, some, some time of professional development for all, some inclusion professional development for all of our teachers, or for all of our faculty and staff. And we decided we would start, um, with the Board of Education. And you all remember, we did the Board of Education, and then we went, and we did the administration. The administration did a two-day training over the summer, uh, one year. And then we, then during the school year, in our first, um, Septembers, not, not this September, the September, before, we took, we all of our support staff, uh, went, underwent some inclusion training. So, we, now, our next step is there, we still have not reached to the teachers. So, we want to get, you know, into, we want to get the teachers into some of this. And we're trying to decide, how does that training look? Is it going to look like it did for the first four groups that we did, or is it going to look differently? So, that, that's our next conversation. What's this going to look like? Is it going to be, um, you know, a start off on a professional development day, maybe in September, part of a professional development day with some, with, because we all know, you know, nothing, nothing sticks if we do it once, and then we, what, what is the program of this that we're going to do? So, that, that's our next, I gave, um, I don't know why I did this, but I gave myself the homework of coming back with some, some options, um, for the, for the Diversity Cadre to consider and talk more. But I know based on the conversation that was going out on that table, and that we had to force them to leave, um, you know, at the, at the hour, at the hour that we planned on staying, people are going to bring out their ideas to the table when we meet again.
And did you set a date?
We set a date for January twenty-second.
Thank you. Any questions, please? All right. Any other old business? And then to new business? New business? Any new business? Mr. Shonky?
Um, we had in our board packet, a, uh, state, uh, preliminary results of the two thousand fourteen statewide evaluation, uh, A T P R. I think, I don't recall, I think, I think it's been mentioned, but what, what is the breakdown of Kingston City School District of the heady, class, heady results or ratios?
Um, you know, off the top of my head, I don't want to say that the exact numbers, I mean, we, we were, I believe we were, ninety-eight percent of our teachers were highly effective or affected, with two percent in developing and or, um, ineffective.
Let's give you that.
Yeah. And get the, I think I'm, where's the shirt? And Mrs. Nakarado's nodding her head, saying you are correct.
You are.
And, um, I don't know. Can anyone explain, uh, if anyone has it, or can we do it next time? Page thirteen of that report, just a part. And I think I understand, but I don't.
I think it's easier to understand that the color version that's online. It's like where everything's shaded gray.
I get confused with, with access is. I think they're trying to give you the, uh, the bell curve. Different way.
Correct. If anything, you want to look at this, look at it online for its info, because it's much easier to read. All right. Any other new business?
I have two pieces.
Coffee, sorry.
So, Ulster County School Board Association Legislative Action Committee met in December. Actually, couldn't be at that meeting in a few weeks. Uh, Mr. Shonky, don't worry. Also, I don't know either. But, um, one of the big initiatives of this committee is to get everybody in Ulster County to, um, advocate for elimination of G A, and advocate for restoration of Foundation Aid and of the money. Um, and so, for the, and I think it's Rhonda Valley has created a petition, and it's put online, and it's got, you know, it's got like a quick summary of what it is. And it's basically asking its public to sign on to this petition, and then the LAC will collect those and then add them up to our petition. And so, I was wondering if there's support among the board for us to put a similar petition on our website, um, and communicate that for our public.
Do I make motion?
Is that how it works? Yeah. Is that, is that really the fact? Yeah. Can I make a motion to?
I will second that. Any more discussion? Is there anyone opposed? Well, maybe I, I should start. All those in favor of putting a petition up, um, that supports elimination of, the gap elimination adjustment and restoration of Foundation Aid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, is there anyone opposed? Yes.
So, I, I think that the way that the petition, well, not mistaken, the way that we discussed it at the November meeting of the, um, was going to be asking our legislators that in the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget, that we would like to see the restoration of the dollar amount that will be deducted for that year. If, if it stays the same as it was, you know, not that we, not, not that we want, expect to get ten million dollars or whatever, but there may be, and I think, I think we have the number for each district, each component district. It may be a million and a half dollars or something like that, that gets eliminated, that would be eliminated from our state aid.
Where do we be looking for it? The restoration this year of the money?
I think that's the way, I think that's the way.
Throw it back, hey, from what we've had in the past for years, if the restoration is given a year.
Yeah. Let's not get any further behind this session, what petition is.
So, can I look at, um, this side effort, about, to get that on the website? And then figure out how to, can we get the word out to the, you know?
I'm sure you use that, um, superintendent's wording from the random feeling, that's true. Okay. We'll be starting, this is just, we're starting our old petition, or we're going to add, ask our district to add on to the Rhonda petition?
They're all coming together. So, all, so it, it essentially will be all the, hopefully, all of the, all the districts will, will stay together, so.
And others, not, do you definitely want to forget? We're going to, she was balancing a bunch of them back. Yeah. I'm clear what it was, it's just how it works.
And this thing has some, on the issues that are happening really across the state. So, would it just be Ulster County Board, or is it something that we would?
And we are supporting, Metta Town, yes, okay. And you're getting it, it was in the consent agenda. Okay. And the consent agenda, which we just passed that resolution to support Metta Town and, is that, is that, that file, huh? Against the state. Okay. Any other new business?
Um, two pieces of new business that I would, the first is, we have a coffee and conversation scheduled for Tuesday thirteenth. I know that I, it's been my, I've been kind of part of those. I can't be there. I'll be up in Albany with the New York State Council's most of the schools for the day. So, I don't know if that makes a difference. I know, I think it's, um, Dan, uh, Ms. Guido and Ms. Lau who will be there. I don't know if that makes a difference, or if you just want to go ahead and anybody, that's fine. But it's fine with you to do that.
Not fine with that. We can't have the last one, so.
With attending as well? Okay. Do you want to give the timing place again? It's nine AM, Monkey Joe's. Monkey Joe's, okay. Tuesday, January thirteenth, nine AM, Monkey Joe's. This lovely lady who's there to answer your question.
The second thing for, I was, I would like to request the board consider, um, we have a board meeting on March eighteenth. If the board would consider moving that board meeting to March twenty-fifth.
If I'll make a motion, uh, that we consider amending the board meeting calendar to make the second meeting of the month in March on the twenty-fifth as opposed to the eighteen? Any discussion about that? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And what school is that going to be on?
School gets out.
No, I mean, what school would that be?
Oh. It's, it's in school? Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't. Okay. Any board member announce this? Mr. Shonky?
Um, there will be a meeting tomorrow night of the, um, Ulster County School Board Association at the, um, Convent Center at Ulster Bell's headquarters on the thirty-two, at six o'clock. The meeting starts at six thirty. It'll be at dinner, like, like, at six o'clock. And it will be meeting with our legislative representatives.
Thank you very much. I know we have a few people send Dr. to the circle. Okay. Any other board announcement? All right. I would like to announce that the board is having a board retreat on Monday evening at five PM. Five PM?
By three.
By three.
Huh? By three, I'm sorry. I stand corrected, in this room. And, um, I would like to know if you would like my husband to make suit.
Yes. That's one of our questions.
All right. I move my husband to make suit. Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor? Um, and then, the Royal Sappers. If you have not yet returned your important evaluation, I know we've given information to the facilitator for the retreat already, based upon what was turned in from the October self-evaluations. I think even those who are new in October probably have a better handle now on, on how the board functions. So, if you could, please get your evaluation to, you know, as soon as possible, or Monday, so that we have everybody's evaluation on hand for the evening. Hey, and earlier, no? All right. We've reached a portion of the agenda. All right, we've reached a portion of the agenda where we welcome public participation. Does anyone like to address the board at this point? Please come forward. Anna, Brad? Okay, then since we have no need for a second executive session, so I will actually change that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Thank you very much.